No?
So it doesn't look like we're gonna have it on. All right. We're gonna call the Belvidere City Council meet- regular meeting of Ja- July fifteenth, twenty twenty four to or- order if the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Albertini.
Here.
Brereton.
Here.
Flurry.
Here.
Frank. Frank is absent. Freeman. Freeman is absent. Gramkowski.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Mahal.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens. Stevens is absent. Seven present.
Okay, thank you. If you'll stand for the pledge of allegiance, followed by the invocation, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we thank you for our country, community, our families, and our freedom. Lord, we thank you for our current military service members and for all the men and women veterans who have served and sacrificed throughout our nation's history. We pray that you bless them and their families for their service. We thank you for our police and fire, paramedic, first responders in our community and throughout our country who bravely serve our citizens and respond no matter what the cause or what the call. We pray for their well-being and ask that you be with them as they serve our communities. Tonight, we pray for the family and loved ones of former Pennsylvania fireman Corey Comperatore, killed in a senseless assassination attempt on former President Donald Trump. We pray that you comfort them in their time of need as only you can do. We also pray tonight for President Trump and every elected official, every individual that participates in our elective process. We pray for his safety, for their safety, and for the recovery of shooting victims David Dutch and James Copenhaver. Tonight, we also pray for guidance and that you give each of us here this evening patience, compassion, understanding, wisdom, strength, courage, and tolerance as we conduct our city's business, and we pray for these things in Christ's name. Amen. Under public comment tonight, we have, it appears, four individuals to comment. I would ask, tonight, I think we're anticipating some bad weather, and I'm sure everybody has things to do, I know we do, with the flooding that we've experienced, and I'm hoping we can dodge a bullet here this evening, so anyhow, we will go ahead and start. Mr. Lloyd Roberts. Lloyd, good evening.
As was stated, I am Lloyd Roberts. I, um, I promised you last week that I would take a survey, and I did. I went door-to-door for the survey, and I put a survey online. Both are reflective of each other. They both have approximately the same numbers. I got fourteen responses online through the Facebook website, What's Happening in Belvidere, okay? And if I'm not gonna do the numbers on that, I can, I'm more than happy to share them with anybody that wants them. I can send them to you. I can send you the, the, the results. I can send you the, the, uh, survey. It, it, like I said, it was reflective of exactly what I saw going door-to-door. So what I did do with this door-to-door was I wrote everything down here. I did not take any addresses, any names of anybody, because I wanted them to feel like they could talk freely, okay? So, um, I'd like to share those numbers with you and the, some of the comments that I took from the survey. First, setting it up. I went door-to-door, down my street, down Ninth Street, down Fourteenth Street. I did random houses, eliminating any houses that were no trespassing, um, that said no trespassing on that, on them, or any ones that said no soliciting, or the, you know, they just wouldn't answer their door, okay? I was worried about going to other subdivisions because I wasn't exactly sure where all the county lines went, and I wasn't, I didn't want to go outside of the city limits, all right? Residency for the online survey was required in order for them to be able to answer the survey, so it's a hundred percent resident-only on the online survey, just so that it's clear. There were four questions on the survey. There was no requirements to answer all of them, and there was no, no personal information taken, okay? The questions were... And I, I read this to the people when I came up to their door. I said, "First of all, I'm not selling anything. I'm just, I just wanna do a survey." I said, "The point of this survey is to get information about how the public feels about the new garbage ordinance by the city coun- that was passed by the city council on April first and put into effect on June first, twenty twenty-four. Please answer the following questions as honestly as possible and completely as possible. Your personal information will not be shared with anyone, and it won't even be asked for." Question number one was, "Did you know about the garbage ordinance and subsequent switch over before April first? If not, when did you learn about it?" Number two, "Were you happy with your previous provider, and, and how do you feel about the new provider, Rock River Disposal?" Number three was, "The new ordinance does not allow anyone to opt out of the program. Do you think there should be an opt-out clause added to the ordinance?" And number four was, "Is there anything that you would like to share with the board?" And on that number four, I promised them that I would share their, their responses with you, okay? Some of them are good, some of them are not, okay? But I wrote down what they said, word for word, and showed it to them as I wrote it down, okay? All right. Results. Door-to-door, thirty-one surveys were taken. Eight out of thirty-one knew about the ordinance before it was, uh, passed on April first. Seventy-one percent did not know about it. Um, one person said, "I don't remember if I knew about it before or not." Um, most learned, those who did not know, most of them learned when the bins were dropped off and commented that it was quite confusing because they didn't understand what was going on. Um, others learned of it when, when the letter was sent from the city in their water bill. Question number two, where it said, "Were you happy with your previous provider?" Ninety percent of the people were happy with their previous provider. Are you happy with the new provider? Sixty-one percent are happy with their new provider. But nineteen percent of those that were happy retained the same provider they already had, Maringo, or, uh, Rock River, okay? So, kind of balances it out to about fifty-two percent were, you know, of the same, um, if, if the same providers were eliminated, it would be fifty-two percent were, are happy with the new one. Question three, opt-out clause. This is the one that really got me. Yes, we should have an opt-out clause. Eighty-four percent. That's twenty-six out of thirty-one said they would, they would, they think there should be an opt-out clause. Um, no was four out of thirty-one, twenty-six percent, and one was not sure. The online responders, there, at the time that I wrote this, there were eleven. There are now fourteen that responded. All of them a hundred percent residents. There were thirty of them, thirty percent didn't know about it. Seventy percent did not, or did, thirty percent did know about the ordinance coming up before it was voted on. Seventy percent did not. A hundred percent were happy with their previous, um, only forty-five percent were happy with the new one. Opt-out was eighty-one percent, very close to what was door-to-door, and eighteen percent said no. I, I don't think I need to go through the, the ramifications of these numbers. I think you guys know all what's going on with that, with these numbers. But I would just like to share the comments, and I'm, I'm, I know I'm reading this fast because we wanna do time, and, and I want you guys keeping, you know, being here too long, but, um, on question number four, I read it, I'm gonna read it exactly how they said it to me. "A lot of people are hot, glad they are saving money, saving me money, but for those others, it sucks. I prefer my original. If something falls out of the bins, they, the, these new ones won't pick it up. It's fine with me," meaning the new, new service is fine. "It felt like I never knew anything. There was no warning. They should've put some notices on our doors or something. I appreciate the bigger containers and the fewer trucks, um, but it still needs an opt-out. I like it. Thanks for the savings. Not happy with the council. My husband wonders if there is a kickback. Should've been a referral or a reference or something, or, or a referendum or something. Sorry, I misreading my own, my own writing here. Um, my service costs more now. Um, we should have an option, and I thought this was land of the free. I know of three houses that had the same service as me, and none of them are happy. What happened with to the free market? I don't like HOAs. They need a provision for an alternative. They've really crossed the line. I don't like them just making decisions about this without asking us. I would like, I would have liked to have a little heads-up. It caused a lot of confusion, and I don't do social media. Um, I like the savings but not pleased with how they went out, went about it. It should be illegal to send me a bill for service I don't use. If I had the money, I would seek legal counsel. Um, not happy with how it was handled. The way this company was selected is questionable. Why weren't we shown the bids? My landlord does the garbage. He was angry when I gave him the bill, and he called, and they still ain't done nothing." I remember that lady. She was very ticked because she said, "I received this bill, and I don't even do the garbage. My landlord pays for it." It's not fair to have, not have a choice. People are pissed. Uh, called the company. They said, "I have to recycle even if I don't want to recycle." This is not Nazi Germany. They must be getting something. Not giving a choice is wrong in itself. Do not ta- take choice from us. They should be at least one other alternative. I like it, but if people wanna pay more, they should be able to. I know a lot of people with dumpsters who should be allowed to keep them. I know that that is a lot, and I want, but I wanted to, oh, that's my writing. That's for me. Um, I know that's a lot, and I went fast. You're welcome to look at these, like I said. I, I wanted to make it a clear picture of what people were saying. I think it's important. One thing that I wanted to, um, convey, as I was going door-to-door, um, one thing that I would like to point out before I take, and, and you have any questions you can ask, um, any questions on this or about the survey, um, there were several people who asked me why I was doing this rather than a board member or the mayor's office. And my response was, it's because I wanted to know if the mayor's perception of the citizens' opinions was correct. And their most common response was, "Well, thank you for doing this. Thank you for caring about what we think," okay? I'm gonna just stop now. Um, I hope that you guys think about it, and thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I do have a question.
Sure.
I have a few, actually. You, in your questions that you asked the residents, you made no mention of the savings, correct?
I did not. I didn't say anything about my opinion about what, what was going on with it.
Any question, just a general question about, are you happy that you're saving money or not happy?
I just asked if they were happy with their service, with the new service.
Um, and I think a couple weeks ago, you came before us, and you said your father taught you to trust but verify?
Yes.
I wanna trust, but I wanna verify.
Sure.
You didn't collect any personal information.
I did not.
How do we know?
Um, well, that's, that is one of the drawbacks of not collecting the personal information. I could have literally have sat down and wrote every single one of these, but then they wouldn't be true, would they? You don't know, and, but I didn't. I mean, you're gonna have to take my word for it. I, I consider myself an honest person. I, I don't know how to convince you other than talk to the people, okay? I did walk around. That gentleman right there can attest that I walked around. I went house to house, you know, and I wrote down word for word. And if you wanna look at these, you're welcome to do so. You know, I don't talk like this. I, there's just no way. I just, you know, I understand your concerns, though.
No, I, and I appreciate that. I'm just kinda using your words, so.
That's fine.
That's all I have.
Okay. Anyone else?
Anybody else, any questions, uh, for Mr. Roberts?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next we have Gary Woods. Gary, good evening. Just state your name for the record, sir. State your name for the record, please.
Gary Woods.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm concerned about this garbage ordinance deal. Uh, I'm not home. I'm only home maybe two days a week, if that, sometimes. And I get a bill in the mail saying that I owe a hundred dollars for June, July, August, September. For a service, I, I have to pay for this, and I'm not even getting service because I don't need it. I quit my garbage pickup back in twenty fourteen because of a job I had, I was never home. And what garbage I do accumulate would fit in a Walmart bag. I'm supposed to pay that kind of money to dispose of this? It's not right. It's just not right. And I, May twentieth, they dropped off the garbage bins, and I called my neighbor, "Why'd they drop them off?" And she told me that, yeah, "New garbage pickup." News to me. I never heard about it. And then, um, I called Rock River and told them I didn't want the garbage pickup because I'm never home. I don't have any garbage to put out. What little I do have, I'll take to my parents' house because I'm there ninety percent of the time, taking care of them. And, uh, lady took my name, and she said she would talk to her manager, call me back. Never got a phone, phone call, never. So then, um, on seven, on July the first, I received a bill in the mail. And I thought, "Come on, this ain't right. I'm not even, I haven't had a piece of garbage out there since June, before that." So I called Rock River again. I was told that, uh, it was mandatory. I had to accept the garbage service. Well, how can I accept the garbage service when I don't need it? It's just not right. There should be an opt-out clause for people like me that aren't home. I have two elderly, elderly parents and Elgin that I have to take care of. Most of my time is spent there. I'm only home maybe one, two days a week, if that, sometimes. And I just, I don't think it's fair. And I came down to City Hall here July the first after I talked to Rock River, and the mayor was not in. And I, uh, left my name, number, address with the little secretary, short little girl, and she said, "The mayor will give you a call." Well, I have not received a call back from the mayor, not one time.
Is that a question you're directing at me, or?
Well, I wonder why I didn't get a call back.
Well, Mr. Woods, I recall every individual that calls, calls, and I actually saw two individuals today regarding garbage service in the city of Belvidere. I have a pretty good memory, but I don't remember a message ever coming to call you. Yeah, if I, if, if I would've had a message, I would've called you.
Yeah.
And I, and if you give me your, leave your name and number, I'll call you. Uh, I'm not avoiding. I don't duck anybody, and I'm not avoiding calling people. Uh, and I will certainly have a conver- I would certainly have had a conversation with you.
Yes.
But I want you to know, and, uh, trust and verify, you can trust me, and you can ask people that have called City Hall or that have come up here, and I've seen and called every one of them, and if I would've gotten your message, I would've called you as well.
She didn't give you the message, then, because I left it with her.
Perhaps, I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying I didn't have your name and number.
Yeah.
A lot of people fill out submissions online, emails, and even them, even then, I call all them back, and I have. And I will tell, go ahead. I'm sorry, but I wanted to answer that question.
No, that's fine.
Were you done?
That's fine.
Yeah, were you done?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
No.
Continue.
And I would like the council to consider an opt-out clause here for people like me that, I'm not home. It's just not fair. Why should I pay for a service that I'm not using? If I was using it, it'd be different. Uh, once I get situated with my parents and stuff and I'm back home full-time, I'd be allowed to take the garbage service. But right now, I do not need it. I can't use it, and it'd be a waste of money. I might as well just sit down right out of the check for, to Rock River and just send it to them, say, "Here you go. Enjoy it." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, uh, next we have Stacy Nance. Hi, Stacy, good evening.
Good evening. Hi. Okay, so my name is Stacy Nance. I reside at ten oh four West Fifth Street. Um, calling, I'm here as a last resort. I don't know what else to do, where else to turn. That's what brings me here tonight. I'm here regarding nine thirty-two West Fifth Street. Um, my neighbors and I, and I have a list of all of their first, last names and addresses. I have over a dozen here that I can show you. Um, we have called time and time again, year after year, regarding nine thirty-two West Fifth Street. I have pictures. I would love you to see. Uh, their lawn is so long that we are experiencing mice and possums and skunks and coons and you name it. They take their lawn clippings, and I know this may all seem petty to people, but we have been dealing with this year after year after year. I have some of my neighbors here tonight. Um, I don't know what else to do. Like I said, they take their lawn clippings, and instead of bagging them like we're supposed to, they are now putting them in a pile, which is just creating a nesting breeding ground for more critters. I've looked up my, correct me if I'm wrong, Article Three, Section one eighteen through one thirty-five, regarding that the grass and the weeds shouldn't be taller than eight inches. I have pictures of weeds that are taller than I am. I have pictures of the neighbor's yard. They live right to the, left to me. Um, you can no longer see their fire pit. You can no longer see their patio. I have, like I said, my neighbors and I both, we have called time and time again. I know they get their ten days, then they take care of it, but they're not taking care of it. The weeds are still growing in excess. The grass is growing in excess. Um, do I have permission to pass these pictures?
Uh, I think, you know, I mean, you can. I, I wanted to tell you, I certainly wasn't aware of it. You could've called me. I think I live near you. I-
I believe you do, and I have, um, spoke to, like, Dave and Ken Spudin. Um, they said that you are familiar with the issue, but, like I said, I, and I've called the-
I'm not familiar with it. If I were, and I saw it, I would definitely have said something.
I would love you to see these.
I can't, I can't get them all. Give me the, uh, leave, leave me the pictures.
Can I, can I give you the list of neighbors, too, please?
Sure.
Um, I've called City myself. I know the neighbors have as well, um, time and time again, year after year. Like I said again, it may seem petty, but I'm here tonight asking for guidance. What else can I do? I've contacted the Belvidere Police Department. As far as, is there an enforcement code officer? There is not, such as other departments have. They just refer me back to the city. And it's just been several years, several years, more than several years, that we've been dealing with this over and over again, and I don't know what else to do, paying the taxes that my husband and I are paying to live in the city and not in the country, to have to deal with that and look over my fence line and see nothing but eyes. And now I have mice issues, and we have dogs, and we don't want none of this. We shouldn't have to live next to this. I, that's why I'm here tonight.
Yeah.
I'm just desperate.
Yeah, and I'm glad you came here, and it appears all this is in the backyard.
Yes, and I did talk to Kara or Cara. I, we're pretty much on first-name basis. Um, she said that she cannot go in the backyard. I gave her more than adequate permission to go in my yard, my driveway, and take all the pictures she needed. I don't know if they've been fined at this point. I don't care if they've been fined at this point. But when they take care of it, they're not taking care of it. It's just, they're just taking care of enough to seem like they get out of it, and then we're calling again a month later.
Yeah, I certainly had not seen this. I would have no, uh, reason to unless I received a call. I haven't, I haven't received any.
So what else can I do, or what can you guys do to help us out?
Well, we'll do everything within our ordinance to do it, and I believe that, uh, we have plenty.
Okay.
So we will address it.
I hope so.
Uh, now that, uh, I'm aware of it, but, uh, you could've called me, uh, as well.
I don't know exactly where you live. I just know you're not far from me, so.
I'm not, and a lot of times people, uh, will stop by when I'm out.
Okay.
Or whatever and say something, so feel free to, uh, but I will, uh, will look into this, and, uh, I would agree if I lived next to that.
And in the, in the pictures, Clint, there are, there's a patio and a fire pit back there. You can no longer see it.
Yeah, I understand.
It's, it's just, it's, like I said, I hate to be a Karen here tonight, but it's absolutely ridiculous, and this has been going on for too long.
Well, uh-
I mean, it's also a health concern as far as, like, our pets go and, and we go. We don't need that right next door.
Well, I understand.
And I don't wanna have to pay to get my land surveyed and put up a privacy fence. That's not gonna help with the critters. And I shouldn't have to pay for the survey and the privacy fence and all that, so.
I would agree, and, uh, we'll, we will address it.
I hope so.
Thank you for coming here this evening.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You can keep those, Clint.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and, uh, Alderman Snow, I have, uh, you down, down here for public comment.
Yes.
Feel free.
So I've, uh, I got a letter in the mail from an anonymous constituent, um, or resident of Belvidere. It doesn't say, um, Ward Two, but they're, they were very happy with their, um, previous supplier of MDC and have had nothing but issues and do not believe that we should've had this, uh, thrown down our throats. And I also got a call from a Mark LaRue, um, this afternoon, and, uh, he was very vocal about the issue of being forced to have this, and not having freedom of choice, and not being able to opt out. So just wanted to voice those in.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, all right, uh, we will move on here. Item four, approval of minute, oh, before we move on, real quick, real quick. I do want to say, unfortunately, when individuals get on, uh, Facebook or whatever, there's a lot of things that are spread about garbage service in this community, and they're not true. One of them is that the city is going to prosper, or, or me, or some individual is prospering. Uh, nobody in the, nobody, uh, at City Hall, uh, City of Belvidere does not prosper. I certainly do not. Uh, there's no money exchanged, nor would there ever be. But, um, whenever we did this, uh, the majority of the individuals, uh, that have called me, and I could run you a survey as well, uh, of the, of the individuals that felt that garbage service in this community was too high, and, uh, doubled, in some cases even more than doubled. So the intent was never to cause anybody any harm. The intent has always been, how do you combat runaway inflation? And as I had set up here before, over the last three and a half years, uh, four years maybe, three and a half, I guess, we've seen a runaway inflation to the point of groceries, uh, fuel, and, um, many of the essentials that we have to purchase. With that being said, garbage was one of them. Garbage, most people who live here and gar, uh, have garbage, they have a home, they, they produce refuse, and, uh, they definitely have garbage, and they were paying a lot of money for it. This allowed relief, uh, to those individuals. I don't try to discount, and I haven't. I've met with probably maybe thirty people in my office. I've talked to maybe thirty-five or forty over the phone that have called. I did not get, um, Mr. Brooks, is it? Mister, Mr. Woods, excuse me. Uh, I did not, uh, get your message, or I would've called you, but there was never any intent uh, by the city of Bel, Belvidere to make anybody's life more miserable, miserable. The fact is that we, the city, or I, would have no way of knowing, uh, who had, did not have garbage service in the community. I, uh, felt that the majority of the calls that I had gotten, people had garbage service, and I don't think that's unreasonable. I also had received calls from individuals that didn't have garbage service, and I asked some of them, what do they do with their garbage? And you'll be surprised at some of the answers that I got, and I think I've mentioned it. I had one individual that was taking it over next door to their eighty-eight-year-old neighbor, and she's a widow. And they were putting their garbage, and they, he was much younger, certainly not at the end of his income generating, generating career, but he was putting it out with hers. And she was intimidated and was afraid to say anything, but that'd been going on for, I don't know, five or six years. And I know that to be a fact. Also, some people had called, and I said, I'd ask them, what do you do with your garbage? What do you do with your garbage? And they said, well, I take it up to the Shell gas station, and I put it in, I put it out there. And I know that some individuals as well, out at some of the other businesses, have had their dumpster loaded up with other people's refuse. And this doesn't answer like the refuse or the hauling for multi-family. This is for single-family and two-family. Uh, the bottom line, I guess, to me, is that, uh, we had tried to create, uh, savings when in fact, uh, not only do we create a savings for, uh, immediate savings for the, for the majority, the overwhelming majority of people. Now, there's certainly some bugs to be worked out, but we also, uh, we also reduce the wear and tear that everybody has on their streets. And we were able to do that, and we were able to build, uh, sign a five-year contract that over the length of the contract was going to be, it wasn't inflation-proof, but it was certainly a lot better than a hundred percent or more that individuals have experienced over the last three and a half years. So there are always things that you're never going to get everybody, and that's just a fact. Not everybody's going to be happy, but in this case, uh, I don't know. I think, uh, the alderwoman Gramkowski had made a good point. If people have garbage service, and in this case seventy percent or more had, uh, the parent company, had the same parent company as MDC that hauled the same garbage. It's the same, it's, uh, Rock River and, uh, MDC, they're, they're, they have the same parent company. So essentially seventy percent of the individuals in Belvidere, their garbage service was innocuous, except for the savings. Some of them were paying a hundred and nineteen, some of them a hundred and eighteen, some of them, some of them maybe more. But now, if you're a senior, which was the predominant, uh, phone calls that I received, please help me, how can we, how can we combat this? Uh, they're paying sixty-seven. So the only way that it worked, there was a motion made on the council floor as an FYI. The motion was made before it was passed to have an opt-out. That was a motion. In order to have an opt-out, if we would've had an opt-out, we probably wouldn't have been able to save anybody any money. Anybody. Now, I would rather represent the ninety-nine percent of the people. There may be individuals, there, there may be individuals that are unhappy, but for the most part, I think people recognize if their garbage is picked up. One of the incidences that we had about garbage all over was the first week that Rock River collected, we had a terrible windstorm. And I know there was garbage all over. I drove around town, and we had garbage all over. And, uh, I don't think that would've been any different had they been, uh, anybody else collecting the garbage. So my point is that there was never any ill will towards residents here. There was never any intent to make anybody's life miserable. It was, how can we save the majority of individuals in this community? How do we give them some relief from really a bill that was getting astronomical? So that's all I wanted to say, uh, about that. And I thank everybody for coming here. So we have item four, approval of the minutes. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council, dated July first, twenty twenty-four, as presented. If I could have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman McGee, second by alderwoman Mohal, thank you. Any corrections or any comments on the motion on the floor? All right, hearing none. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye. And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Item five, public hearing, we have none. Item six, special messages and proclamations, we have none. Item seven, approval of expenditures, we have general and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of two million, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. Uh, if I could have a motion to that effect, please, for approval? Motion by Alderman McGee, thank you, and a second, uh, by alderwoman Mohal, thank you both. Any questions regarding the general and special funds that are in your packet this evening? If anybody has any questions, feel free, and we'll try and answer them. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, uh, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Albertini?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And we have water and sewer fund expenditures, uh, for approval this evening, that being eight hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-three cents. If I could have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, and a second by Alderman Flurry, thank you both. Any questions regarding those expenditures? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers. For the record, items A through H have been placed on file with the city clerk. And, uh, item I are the minutes, uh, of the committee of the whole building, planning, zoning, and public works, uh, dated July eighth of twenty twenty-four. If I could have a motion for their approval, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Flurry, thank you both.
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
And I'd like to make an amendment to those minutes in, under the public comment section, um, adding verbiage that, um, it was asked and approved that the garbage ordinance was going to be on the next committee of the whole agenda.
Uh, actually, uh, yes, oh, yes, it is going to be.
I just wanted to reflect it in the minutes that it was requested and it was approved, that it was going to be.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, yeah, it's going to be on the agenda.
It was not approved.
Yeah.
At that meeting, but- He said he would.
Do you want me to say that?
Well, it was asked, you know, it was asked to be placed on the agenda, I would assume.
So I'm making a motion to amend the minutes, um, under public comment, either number three or other, saying that, um, the, um, it was asked and approved that it was going to be on the next agenda. That's all.
That's fine. Yeah. Okay, anything else? Anybody? All right, we have the, uh, minutes, uh, of the committee of the whole building, planning, zoning, and public works of July eighth. Uh, we have a motion to pass them.
Yep.
Yes. Uh, if there's no other-
Again, I'd like to make a motion to amend the minutes, to reflect that.
Okay. Uh, okay, so we have a motion to amend the minutes that, uh, that be brought up at the next, the garbage issue be brought up at the next, uh, committee of the hall, correct? Is that right? Okay.
We need to vote on the motion to amend.
Do you want, uh, is there anything else? Okay, so we have a motion to amend the minutes. Uh, all those in favor, uh, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll?
Flurry?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion then, uh, to pass the, uh, minutes as amended. All those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay? Clerk calls a roll, please?
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Flipping to the next page, we have item nine on finished business. We have ordinance six eighty-five H, uh, in front of you for a second reading this evening. That being an ordinance adding certain territory to Ward One of the city of Belvidere. If I could have a motion to that effect, please?
Still moved.
Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Albertini, thank you both. And, uh, this, of course, is with the annexation, um, regarding the territory at Midwest Refrigerated Services. Uh, those have to be, those would fall into a certain territory that will be Ward One. Essentially, that's what the ordinance is. If there's any questions, uh, feel free to ask. Okay. We have, uh, motion and a second on the floor then, to pass ordinance six eighty-five H, that being an ordinance adding certain territories to Ward One of the city of Belvidere. All those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Thank you, motion passed. And we have item ten, uh, is on the agenda this evening, item ten A, ordinance six eighty-six H, for a first reading, that being an ordinance authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement between the city of Belvidere and Tanner Industries, Inc. Uh, that will be back in front of you, uh, in two weeks. We have item B, ordinance six eighty-seven H for a first reading as well this evening. That being an ordinance annexing certain territory lying south of Hockey Road and east uh, of Irene Road to the city of Belvidere, uh, in Boone County, Illinois. That again, will be back in front of you, uh, in two weeks. We have item C, ordinance six eighty-eight H as a first reading, that being an ordinance granting a zoning district change from Earl Holding, uh, District to Planned Industrial District, uh, twenty-one ninety-three and twenty-two eleven, uh, Hockey Row, Hockey Drive, excuse me. And that will be as well back, uh, to you in two weeks on the agenda. Item D, ordinance six eighty-nine H for a first reading, that amending Section one ten dash one ninety-eight of the city of Belvidere municipal code regarding a fifteen-minute parking stall located at five twenty-two South State Street as well. That will be back for your vote in two weeks. We have six ninety, ordinance six ninety H, that being an ordinance amending Section one fourteen dash four one one and the sec, and Section one one four dash four one two of the Belvidere municipal code pertaining to pre-treatment local limits. Uh, that will be back, uh, in front of you. We for a motion, uh, for approval in two weeks. And we have Resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten this evening, that being a resolution accepting revisions to the pre-treatment local limits. Uh, if I could have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by alderwoman Mohal. Second? Second by Alderman Snow, thank you both. Any questions, any comments, uh, regarding the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of Resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay? As a clerk calls a roll, please?
Mohal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And motions forwarded from the committee of the whole building, planning, zoning, and public works of July eighth, twenty twenty-four. Movements, uh, out of planning, zoning. Chairman McGee?
Thank you, mayor. A, motion to allocate the amount of twenty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars for the downtown facade improvement grant as proposed in memo dated June twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, from community development planner Gina DeRose.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have that motion out of committee. Is there any questions regarding the motion on the floor? As Gina will tell you, it's a pretty good, uh, time, pretty good, uh, year, uh, to have, uh, requests made. Uh, we have, more than enough to meet everybody's requests, so. Anyhow, uh, we have the motion on the floor. If there are no questions regarding the motion, um, all those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Uh, thank you, Chairman McGee. Movements out of public works, Chairman Snow?
Thank you, your honor. B, motion to approve the proposal from CES, Inc., in the amount of thirty-five thousand to complete the engineering for the manhole adjustment project. This work to be paid for from line item four one dash five dash one one zero dash eight zero two zero.
Okay, thank you. We have that motion out of committee. Are there any questions, uh, or comments, uh, on the motion on the floor? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, the motion will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Albertini?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Uh, item C, please?
C, motion to approve the proposal from Great Lakes Urban Forestry in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars to complete the tree inventory canopy assessment and urban forestry management plan for the city. This work will be paid for from the grant funds.
Okay, thank you. Any questions regarding the motion out of committee? Now's the time to ask. All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed. Thank you. And flipping, uh, final pa-, to the final page, item D?
D, motion to approve the use of $1 million for ARPA funds in the fiscal year '25 for costs associated with the replacement of two sludge heaters at the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, we have that motion, uh, out of committee. If there's any questions regarding the motion on the floor? Go ahead. Okay, hearing none. Uh, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Flurry?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed. Thank you. And, uh, item E, please?
E, motion to approve the proposal from Baxter Woodman in the amount of $158,000 for the engineering, design, and construction services to complete the sludge heater replacement at the wastewater treatment plant. This work will be paid for from the sewer depreciation line item number 61-1790.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Is there anybody that has any questions regarding that motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Okay, thank you, Chairman Snow. Moving on, uh, motions out of, uh, public safety. Chairman Flurry?
Thank you, mayor. F, motion to close North Main Street from Perry Street to Menominee Street from 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM for a national night out on August 6th, 2024.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Any questions, any comments regarding the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed. Thank you. And, uh, lastly, item G?
G, motion to accept the donation of $528 from Myers Kettle Incorporated and the donation of $100 from Midland State Banks to be used as requested for the purchase of supplies, equipment for our K-9 unit.
Okay, we have, uh, that motion out of committee. Is there any questions, any comments regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Mohal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Okay, motion passed, and that's all we have, uh, this evening on the agenda. If I could have a motion to adjourn, please? Motion by Alderman Albertini, second by Alderman McGee. All those in favor, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
And if anybody wants to stay. All right, motion passed. We're adjourned, uh, at 6:54 PM. Thank you, everybody, for your time, and let's pray for no rain.